A fee for just one user. But it's something I could look into. I know that, you know. Fee, the, it, from what I've understood is that when municipalities try to impose a fee in lieu of a tax. They, the legislature steps in and stops that from happening. But it's definitely something I can look into some more. I think it's, it's a bit of a long shot. And we would have to really think about, you know, how that would be. I, I don't think you can just say one user, because even though, you know, most of the people who have that need are coming from one particular source. There are some people who maybe are staying in a lodge that maybe need EMS services or residents who may need EMS service. And then there are the fires, right? So I, we'd have to look into how you can, you can't just charge one group and not others. So that.
Well, the, the idea of singling out Alta ski area and taxing their sales, that's not one that I could join in. Um, and I, I think the idea that the burden of emergency services is coming from the ski area overlooks the fact that none of us would be here if it weren't for the ski area. Maybe there'd be five hermits living in the town of Alta if it weren't for the ski area. We all benefit from the ski operations. And I think we all have to share the public safety costs that that entails.
So I'm gonna try to, we do have another issue that I think needs to be discussed before our town council meeting to try to make the conversation at the town council meeting a little bit more streamlined. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna close this part of our work session. Unless you have strong objections to that, I'll just make the comment that as I understand it, we're gonna get a bill in July for seven hundred and whatever that is, thirty nine thousand dollars. Well, we pay quarter, we're billed and paid quarterly, so it'd be twenty five percent of that unless we take some other action. The, um, so I don't know about the timing of what Polly would be looking into. So the second item on our work session agenda is the extension of emergency proclamation number one, which is set to expire on the thirteenth. So this is our opportunity to extend that. We have a resolution to extend it by another month, which would be again, some days, some, a few days, five days after our next town council meeting. I don't know, Polly, if there's the opportunity to extend it for longer than that or not. But in any case, I, I think that since we have a town council meeting scheduled for May eighth, is it? We have a town council scheduled for May sixth. So, you know, a month is adequate. If we were not to extend this, all of the emergency proclamations that follow from emergency proclamation number one, which was creating the legal framework for the rest of the, uh, any other emergency proclamations would dissolve as well. And so, you know, the lodges could be open. We could have short-term rentals. We could have businesses open, food trucks, whatever. We wouldn't, we would, we would have the legal framework of the county, of course. Do you want to comment on that, Polly, or does anybody else want to?
I'm fine extending it another thirty days. I don't see any reason to not do that.
The, uh, the governor's talking about extending his until the end of May, I think, Chris. And, uh, and so is the county mayor talking about that at this point.
I believe that's the case, yeah, per, per the news anyways. And the, the county may be taking action like tomorrow in a special meeting, I believe, to extend the order.
My, my guess is, is we're, we're creeping up on a stronger stay-at-home order by the county rather than a loosening of, uh, the distancing requirements.
Or at least by the governor.
Yeah, can I make a quick comment?
Um, and just, so there's no statutory requirement in terms of the length of the extension. The idea, I think, behind the thought I had at least with the thirty days is just that it's a definable period of time and that you're gonna have another council meeting within that period. So that if there's still a need for it, still state of emergency in thirty days, you can continue to extend it.
Right.
And what it does is it continues all those orders which the mayor has made and also continues to show that we're in a state of emergency for the residents, the businesses of Alta.
Mike, you want to say something?
Uh, yes. I just wanted to point out from the Marshals Department point of view, having the order in effect gives us the ability to treat violations under town code rather than having to do it under a county or state code, which is a great benefit. Of course, we're would only be in a very egregious situation, but it's a good tool for us to have.
Yeah, one, one other consideration there is that as long as the emergency order is in place of viol- violations of an emergency order or a class B misdemeanor, even if the underlying offense under the town code would be a class C misdemeanor. Again, it's not like we're trying to punish people, but it does give us a little bit more. It's another tool if we were to need it, I guess, is what I would say.
And one of the first things that we have to establish on any call is, you know, are we legally there? And this order provides us that framework.
I'm in favor of extending.
Any other? Okay, well, that, that seems like we're, we've covered that pretty well. Okay, uh, if you want, we have, I was gonna say at, at five of, give people, you know, in a few minutes. Give P, I know that the work session goes till five, but I was thinking that at four fifty-five, if we don't have something else, we could take a quick break. I, I would love to go get a glass of water. I forgot to bring one up to my desk. Is there anything else that somebody wants to say about the UFA or UFSA in a couple of minutes? All right, well then, I'm gonna propose that we adjourn the work session and reconvene. And I have four fifty-three on my computer. The magic of the internet must be right, right?
So how do we do that?
I think we just agree to do it. Do we need a motion to adjourn a work session? I don't think so.
No, I think more technically, should everyone just keep their videos going? Or should we all sign out and get back in?
No, 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 no. Sorry. I, I, Sheridan, I, I took you, your question to be a legal one as opposed to a technical one. I beg your pardon. Uh, I think we just, I'm just gonna leave this going. You can look at the flowers. I'm gonna go get a glass of water and come, come right back.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Can, can I just make a quick announcement? That, yeah, we do have, I've finally figured out the broadcasting and so it's just via a different link. So Chris is updating that on our website now for folks. Sorry about that.
Okay, thank you.
Jen, did you mean the YouTube link or the Zoom link?
No. No, no public is joining into the Zoom call. This is the YouTube URL.
Right, okay.
It was the only way I could figure out how to get this meeting to broadcast.
Right, so Jay and Mark, you think that they will be able to get sound now?
Oh, I can unmute them. If they're, are they having issues?
Well, Jay said that he wasn't getting the sound and I don't know what Mark's.
Are we talking about Zoom or YouTube?
YouTube.
I don't know how he would be on YouTube because the link has not been shared yet.
From the other link that you provided earlier?
Not, the problem was it never broadcasted. That's what I've been working on for the last hour.
Right, okay.
The way I solved it required, the way I solved it required a new URL and a new code and information. So that's being sent to Chris, put on the website, and that's how people will be able.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Should be back up.
Yeah, hopefully, hopefully they'll see that, yeah. Jay, I see that you joined, so we're, um, did you join because you couldn't hear on YouTube?
Yeah, yeah, I just joined the Zoom meeting, so.
Okay.
There was no video either, right, Jay?
No.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Nice background, Jay.
Hey, how about that?
Yeah.
We customize for the town.
I'm looking at the YouTube blankets live.
Great, thank you so much, Chris. Sorry, I don't have WordPress on my laptop.
Oh, it's backward. My head is backward. God, that's horrible.
You can actually fix that in your settings here. You do the mirror image.
I am not gonna watch that. Mute myself.
Chris, did you, I don't, I'm on the website and trying to click the link.
I thought that he left.
Yeah, well, I was hoping you'd fix the, use the link first and upload it and get it going. Guess not.
So Cliff, I had this similar problem about ten minutes before you did, and I ended up restarting my computer, which is how I Zoom crashed on me and then I couldn't reopen it. And I was like, oh, perfect timing. So, but restarting, I did, did fix that problem.
That did the trick. Thanks, Harris.
So I just had a question. Is, in terms of those documents that I referred to, are they gonna be added to the record? Do there need to be a motion about that or procedurally, how did we handle that?
Which documents? Do you mean the, the late comments?
No, sorry, the, um, the materials that I got from Jay that I gave to all the council members in March and that were the basis of my comments today.
When we get to the resolution, why don't you just say that you request that they be added and I'll just say without objection.
Okay, that's fine.
And we'll just add them to the record.
Okay.
And then you, you'll send them to me, Margaret?
Yeah, John has a copy of them. I think he got it in March or something. But yeah, I'll send them to you. One's an Excel spreadsheet and the other's a picture of some kind. I, I don't know what the document is, but I'll send them to you, Piper.
Thank you.
Okay, um, well, uh, let me welcome everybody to the, is everybody back? Let me look, Elise just disappeared. Cliff. Okay, Sheridan, Cliff, Margaret, the, and Elise, okay. Are we ready to go, Piper, in terms of the recording? It's still recording, I assume. You're muted, so I can't hear you.
You're talking to me. Yes, we are recording.
Oh, Jen, okay.
Yes, and the broadcast is going live now. We had to set up a new link, but it has been posted to the website.
Okay, very good. Okay, so I'd like to call the meeting, the, the remote Alta Town Council meeting of Wednesday, April eighth, twenty twenty-two order. Let me just say that since our last town council meeting on March, on March eleventh, it feels like an eternity has passed. Like the world we're in feels very different between earthquake and disease telecommuting. It's a very different situation. So, welcome, everybody. I'm glad that we could meet this way. Okay, um, the first item on our agenda is citizen input. And Piper has received a couple of comments and we asked for them in writing, given the format and given that these formats are a little bit vulnerable to being disrupted. And I will say, we have a backup plan if we lose control of this public meeting. And what we would do, Jen, you want to just quickly describe the, what people should do?
Sure. Pay attention to your email outside of Margaret, who I'm gonna text, because she doesn't always get emails quickly. And we'll have a new meeting, um, login and everything.
Yeah, well, essentially.
And ready to go to just hit send to you guys if that does happen. So it should be fairly quick.
Yeah, so we have a backup. We will reconvene with a new invitation if this meeting gets disrupted. Okay, citizen input. Piper, can you please, uh, give us, uh? Are there?
Yes. Yes, um, uh, can you hear me? Yes, okay. Uh, this comment came from Mark Cake regarding the town of Alta annexing into the UFA, UFSA. The town of Alta should inventory all the currently approved sources of municipal water supply in the following approved change application file at the State Engineers Office, Utah Division of Water Rights and review how and where the water should be utilized for fire protection. Uh, he references fifty-seven dash one zero 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 nine, fifty-seven dash one zero zero one three and fifty-seven dash one zero zero one five. In addition, the water user claim WUC fifty-seven dash eighty-nine seventy-three should as well be reviewed as it claims Salt Lake City Public Utilities to serve following inhabitants, those within its SLCPU service areas in Salt Lake County, commuter, workforce, and visitor populations. The visitor population being the most important to the economic well-being of the town of Alta. The town of Alta should also review the numerous other available water sources in the town of Alta to determine other water sources which could be diverted for fire protection to better serve the health, welfare, and safety of the community. Regarding the ongoing eternal review of parking circumstances in the town of Alta, the council should publicly, publicly review the following documents. Number one, the nineteen eighty-eight agreement to finish construction of a parking lot at SR two ten MP number twelve in the town of Alta and the invoice for the work from UDOT. Number two, the nineteen ninety-one agreement to extend and install asphalt for the parking lot at Grizzly Gulch at SR two ten MP one three in the town of Alta. Number three, the nineteen ninety-seven town of Alta's submittal to UDOT regards road status signed by Mayor Levitt. Number four, the nineteen ninety-seven town of Alta certification to UDOT regards road status. Number five, the two thousand town of Alta's submittal to UDOT regards road status signed by Mayor Levitt. Number six, the two thousand and three town of Alta certification to UDOT regards road status. All of the foregoing effect where people park and jurisdictional questions of authority to govern parking. I've provided all the above documents to town of Alta Clerk Miss Lever and submit them to the council for your review. Signed Mark Cake. And I have those accompanying documents. I have a second communication from Dan Colangelo. Mayor Sandak and council members, we are homeowners in town. We strongly urge you to explore funding sources for fire and EMS services which place the financial responsibility for those services upon those who most directly benefit from or use them. As reflected in the notes from your last meeting, the vast majority of usage is by visitor. In fact, a quick review shows approximately thirty-six homes which have no winter and limited summer access to these services. For us, for us, if a fire or medical emergency were to occur, the chance of a timely response is very small. As a result, it seems that using property tax increases to fund service which properly, sorry, which property owners will never receive is both imprecise and unfair. It would seem a sound course of action would involve a thorough accounting review, negotiation, and the implementation of some combination of a transient room tax and town levied sales tax. Thank you for your time. Signed Dan Colangelo and Carrie Gardner. And that's all I have, the things that were submitted by the deadline of five PM yesterday. You're muted.
Yes, okay, thank you. Okay, uh, the next item on our agenda is a COVID nineteen update by Chris Colley.
My unmuted. Standing in front of the piper horn. It's a nice place to take in a town council meeting. Uh, so yeah, what a month. I, I put together this little memo, just, you know, describing some of the course we followed over the last few weeks and describing some of the things we've been doing at the town to try to confront the situation and manage it. You know, it really is powerful to me to just take a step back and recall what we were talking about with regard to the pandemic, whether it was technically a pandemic or not at that point. I don't, I don't remember, but on the eleventh, we were still three or four days from, you know, ski areas all across the country closing. And, um, you know, sometime during the day that following Saturday, they'll resorts announced all, uh, most of their resorts were closed for the season. And I believe it was that Saturday evening, the fourteenth, that, um, you know, following a flurry of communications amongst us locally, um, you know, Alta, ski area and Snowbird determined they would suspend operations. At that point, um, you know, for at least a couple of weeks, those suspensions were extended. The town declared a state of emergency that evening. We were, I believe, the fifth community, the fifth municipality in Salt, in Salt Lake County to make such a declaration at that point. I think it took another week for every other city in the, in the Salt Lake Valley and Salt Lake County to declare a state of emergency. And of course, now, you know, most urban communities across the country have made similar declarations. The state of Utah requested a major disaster declaration from the federal government and it was signed by the president a couple of days ago. And now only three states in the countries, I believe Vermont, Wyoming, and Idaho have not yet declared or been, been granted the status of a major disaster declaration, which is one of those funding pathways and, and pathways for, for resource assistance from FEMA to smaller units of government that, um, you know, is, is one reason why cities, counties, and states may make these emergency declarations. So, um, you know, in the days that followed that, that pivotal day and the fourteenth, you, you all, I'm sure are aware that the, kind of one of the key events was this doorman in Park City testing positive and having no exposure to a, of COVID nineteen positive patient or any, any relevant travel history. And that sort of opened the door to the understanding that we had community spread ongoing in Utah. Since then, you know, Summit County has maintained the highest case rate by far of any county in the state. And that's consistent with other ski resort communities across the country, not necessarily including Alta. We're fortunate, um, at this point, not to share those characteristics. Plain County, Idaho still has the highest case rate in the country. I was, I was trying to look up that case rate recently and I couldn't find it. But, um, yeah, so, um, you know, obviously, some of the information in this memo that I sent has changed. On the case, Utah cases, as of noon today, the governor's briefing eighteen hundred and forty-six confirmed cases, one hundred fifty-eight hospitalizations, still thirteen deaths in the state of Utah, and eight hundred fifty-eight cases in Salt Lake County. Of course, we have more, more cases in Salt Lake County than the other counties, but we are a much larger county in terms of population. Um, and we have a lower case rate than, than a few counties in Salt Lake. So, um, you know, I, I cited that cases were doubling every three point eight days in Utah. That's no longer the case. I believe it's something, it's, it's higher. It's like six or seven days, you know, based on these rates. But again, these change daily. And they're subject to changes in the frequency of testing and other factors. You know, something I didn't speak to at all in this report is the modeling that we're, you know, entities are using to project, you know, the peak case rate or the highest number of cases in the state. Depending on what model you look at, that's either happening on Friday, it's happening in three weeks, it's happening in a month, or it's happening in late July. So, um, you know, really are still kind of in the, the relatively early stages of this, at least based on what, what we can understand with the data we have. So, um, you know, Alta and Brighton still remain the only communities in Salt Lake County not to have a confirmed case among residents. We should be proud of that. We were, we were fortunate to be able to discontinue commercial operations to the extent we were able to. And that probably, that's most likely a factor in why we don't have local cases. Obviously, down here in the valley where I'm sitting, and in, you know, most relatively metropolitan areas, there's still gonna be commerce ongoing to one extent or another. And that's why there continue to be new infections and new, um, you know, new positive results, et cetera. So, um, we have. So we have been communicating a lot with Brighton. I've been communicating a lot with Brighton, mostly through, you know, Jen Malone, who's an Alta person, who's a council member over there. And they're asking a lot of the same questions we're, we are asking here in terms of, you know, visitation by non-resident property owners, you know, recreation visitation from the valley. They have some of the same economic uncertainties we have about the future, et cetera. And so that, that's been great to be able to follow along with them and know that we have sort of a teammate in our, our neighbor in Canyon. Obviously, one of the, one of our main focuses has been figuring out ways to protect ourselves via the emergency powers that the mayor, that we, you know, provided to the mayor in passing our first declaration of emergency. And, you know, you're all aware that the mayor has passed four emergency proclamations, making various orders over the last couple of weeks. And I listed some of the effects of those in this report. You know, my role as emergency manager, I've been more active in that than I ever have. I mean, this is the, this is, the pandemic is, you know, the, the biggest deal for us here in the state of Utah in terms of a, an emergency or a disaster that we've ever had in terms of a statewide condition. And so the entire emergency management community in the state of Utah is activated and particularly here in the Salt Lake Valley. I've been facilitating a lot of internal communication, daily video calls and email briefings. I get thirty emails a day from Salt Lake County Emergency Management about intelligence and monitoring critical functions. I'm sure you all know that personal protective equipment for first responders and medical professionals is in, is in, there's a, there's a tremendous shortage of that equipment. And that is, I would say, the primary focus of the regional emergency management effort is to identify, exploit and improve supply chains for PPE. So there's a ton of communication going on with regard to that. We are privy to the benefits of some of that coordination. Mike Maury and I are, are both on the receiving end of some additional PPE that will be distributing to the Marshals Department into the Alta Clinic over the next couple of days. So we're really, really fortunate to have relatively modest needs for that kind of stuff. And that so far, we've been able to, to meet the needs that we have. So. You know, going forward, we have some progress to make, some improvements to realize in terms of cost accounting and sort of reporting of our emergency activities to the county, to the state and to the feds. You know, there's, the story changes every day, like I've been saying, with regard to what opportunities are available to local governments, businesses and, and individuals. And it's just, on one hand, it's a matter of posturing and on the other hand, it's a matter of sound administration to remain in position to take advantage of some of these opportunities. And as you may have heard, you know, some of the role, the rollout of some of these programs, like the Small Business Administration program has not been super streamlined or successful up to this point. So we remain vigilant for news of assistance programs for local governments. There's a possibility that a future act of Congress would, you know, appropriate funds for local government assistance. And, you know, that's, that's something that we're going to be trying to improve our understanding up here in the next month. So. That's all I really have to say about this. It's a lot of work and a lot of, we, we spent a lot of time coordinating amongst the staff and I spent a lot of time communicating with outside agencies about all this stuff. And, you know, we're, we're learning as we go and as the information changes. And that's the position we're in.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just add that one of the benefits of having the emergency order in place is that we've limited not just access to the town offices for the safety of everybody, but also some of the functions of the town office. And I, I just really want to thank Chris for the really dedicated and excellent job he's been doing as our emergency manager over the couple of years before this happened that I've been mayor. Chris and I had several conversations about, I gotta, I gotta really get up to make sure I'm really ready for when I need to act as an emergency manager. And despite not feeling ready, Chris has really stepped up to the task and I think has been ready. So I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Chris? It looked, Margaret, like you, like you had one.
Yeah, I, I do actually two, a question and a comment. And the question was, your memo talks about the total number of tests in, I don't know what area, whether it's the state or the county and it's twenty thousand. And so I didn't know if you had an update on that. And then the additional question or comment was, I really appreciate the fact that the parking area for Grizzly has been closed to residents only. I think it's helped to spread out the people on the trail, not so much today. There were a ton of people and I passed a gathering of about eighteen and they were less than three feet apart. But, but overall, I think that that effort has really helped to encourage social distancing, at least in my experience. So thank you for that, Chris, Mike, Harris, everybody.
You're welcome. I'm glad to hear that it seems to have been somewhat effective. We were concerned about the number of people at that trailhead, especially given that our residents park and get into their snow machines there. And we didn't want you to feel bunched up on, let alone the idea that bunching up was a dangerous thing for those people themselves. If you do see groups that are behaving inappropriately or individuals pooping in the woods, you know, you can let the Marshals Office know, like I said, we're not going to be having an effort to arrest people or, you know, punish them. But the trucks, our, our, our town trucks do have speakers on them and we can order groups to disperse if they are within earshot. Of course, if they're further up on the trail, then that's a different issue.
Margaret, thirty-six thousand tests as of today. Thanks for reminding me.
Okay, okay, anything else for Chris on this issue? One thing that's gonna-
Oh, sorry?
No, go ahead, Sheridan.
Thank you. I just wanted to add my commendations to your hard work, Chris, your work, Mayor, Mike and all of the town staff. It's been very impressive and it's hard to believe that an earthquake was combined with all of this. So good job, everybody. And Chris, I'm wondering just a little bit about some of the projections about intensive care beds. Can you speak to that or has that really come up with some of your discussions with Salt Lake? Some of the projections I've seen say that that's where we might have a shortfall.
Um, you know, I guess my first reaction was that I, I thought the projections were that we are going to have enough ICU beds and enough ventilators, I believe, here in Utah. I know that, I think there's been, I've just really mostly through like media surveillance noticed conversations about Utah potentially being in a position to send some of those afield at some point, you know, if our case rate trajectory remains what it is today here in Utah. So I guess I, I guess I can't really comment on that aside from, you know, what I've, what I've seen in the media. And I know there's like, I think there are a couple of different, I don't know if they're public health agencies or like, you know, research entities that are providing those projections at like a, at a high level and at a more granular level, like a county level and a state level. But, and so I don't know whether they're using different modeling per, you know, county or state or if they're using the same, the same modeling and applying it to, I don't know how that modeling works. But, but certainly I've seen one product that suggests that we are essentially ahead of that particular curve. So there, there may very well be others that suggest we're not ahead of that curve. And, and like I said, the projection for when a peak cases in Utah is going to occur, they're all over the place. There, there, again, it's, there's one that says it's Friday of this week. There are some that say it's April twenty-fifth and then there are some that say it's in the middle of the summer. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Chris before I move on? Okay. All right, the next item on our agenda is discussion on possible action on Resolution 2020 R5, a resolution extending for thirty days, the emergency proclamation number one that I issued last month. So I would ask for a motion and a second to pass Resolution 2020 R5 and then I'll invite discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Margaret, I think Elise got to, got to the second before you did, second before. So that, that was a motion made by Sheridan and seconded by Elise. Now, we did talk about this during the work session, is there? Is this, is this document someplace for the public to see, Jen? At the moment?
It's on the town of Alta's website.
Okay, I'm going to just, for the sake of.
It's on our agenda page.
I think this is it here. Yeah, okay, so I've now shared the screen that shows Resolution 2020 R5. And so there is some preamble that talks about our authority and where we have come. The issued proclamation one, which is the framework and two, three and four are effective as long as proclamation one is in effect. We, we say some more about the context of the COVID-19 pandemic. And then we say it is, let it be resolved by the town. It is resolved by the town council to extend the local emergency proclamation number one until May thirteenth, twenty twenty. And this resolution would become effective immediately. Okay, so that's what's before us. Is there any discussion? And I can put the document back up if anybody wants to look at a particular passage.
I, I had a question, Harrison, that was on page one. The third from the bottom of the page, the whereas regarding the proclamations two through four. The only question is, and maybe this is a poly question is, it says unless they're amended or rescinded by the mayor, should that, should or would, or is it necessary or appropriate to say and/or the town council? If, for example, you weren't available or, or whatever, is, is there a reason to add a clause about that?
So this is dictated by state law and the state law gives the mayor the authority to issue the proclamations and, but requires that the town council consent to extend it if need be beyond thirty days. So basically what you're doing is saying that the mayor can continue in his role. If for some reason the mayor wasn't available, then you would go through this and more, you know, the mayor pro tem. There are certain also authorities that the town marshal would have, but those are more limited and more aligned with if there needs to be an evacuation, that type of thing. But, so it's very in terms of the authority.
So the amendment and rescission of any of those proclamations has to be done by the mayor and the council's authority is merely to extend what has already been put in place by the mayor, if necessary.
Correct. So the orders kind of follow along with the initial emergency proclamation and the timing of them. They're effective as long as the first one is effective. So, right, that's correct.
We, we haven't because it doesn't, hasn't so far been necessary. But, you know, we could, we could talk about succession plans. And, and I think that we actually have some in place and Chris, you could speak to that. But if I'm not available for whatever reason, then Cliff would step into that role as mayor pro tem. If both, I, I don't recall what happens, Chris, if both Cliff and I are somehow unavailable and given that we're talking about a pandemic, I guess it's worth reviewing that.
Yeah, we have to submit a, like a statement. Well, there's a, there's a default emergency line of succession in state code. And municipalities have the option of submitting a custom emergency line of succession. And I don't remember whether this year we submitted something. So yes, that's correct. It's mayor, mayor pro tem. And then maybe chief law enforcement officer or chief administrative officer, I forget. But it's defined somewhere.
Minute, Chris, and it is as you described, it goes mayor, mayor pro tem, chief law enforcement officer, then town administrator. John always wanted to be mayor, but he has to.
Well, and I also know that typically for, if for some reason the mayor and mayor pro tem weren't available, you would still have a quorum, which is three. And the quorum could appoint somebody to step in for the mayor pro tem if, if had, if they had.
Okay, any additional further discussion on this motion that's before us? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question, Polly, how do, how do we vote in a situation like this?
It's just like a regular resolution.
So everybody speaks at once?
Everybody, yeah. I mean, if you want to do a roll call vote, you can, but it's just like-
Call the roll.
So there's also a reaction button, I think, at the bottom of your screens and you can have a thumbs up there if you wanted to. That would be a visual way that you could vote yes. I don't see, I don't see a thumbs down. Okay, so I'll just call the question. All those in favor, please either give us a thumbs up, which I just saw from Cliff and Margaret, or a, or an audio audible yes, I'll, I'll vote yes to.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, I.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so any opposed? I think that I just counted all yeses. Good, okay, we will move on to the next item on the agenda. Which is the Alta Ski Area Update by Mike Mon, who is unmuted at the moment. And so, Mike, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Just wanted to express first a big thank you to everyone. You were, we're traveling through uncharted waters and it's like everybody says, it seems like it's been a month since this started. And I really appreciate the communication we've had between the town and the other entities. I think we have had a lot of communication and we've worked well together to kind of get us to where we're at currently. We went from 541 employees to we're down to about 90 now. We've gotten rid, all of our seasonals have moved on. We just have our essential kind of our summer staff now working. Many of them have chosen to take time off at this period of time and others are working from home, but about 80% of our employees would need to come to the ski area to do their job. We have extended our four day work week in the summer. We're staying with a seven day work week to spread out people and practicing social distancing in the workplace. And we are, have really put our efforts in trying to keep clean in, in the workplace. And so it's a we, we've continued to work a little bit with the forest service and talking about the summer. At this point in time, it will depend upon conditions as, as we go forward, but we're intending to do some more work with the Albion parking lot on the east end, cutting into that bank, losing paving and that material. Would then go to Sunny Side Pitch One or the last pitch of Home Run and take some of the steepness out of that slope for beginners skiers. We also intend to, contractors indicated that they still tend to come and finish the off construction. They're looking at a June 1st start date. We will plow the road at some point in time and let it try to get melted out in time for that. That of course is all contingent upon where things go with this virus in the immediate future. We are also currently planning to have, we're planning for summer operations, but that's also contingent upon what happens. Our summer operations would include kind of scaled back a little bit more. We would run the fee booth and we would have a small campground type store. Not a store that you would go into, but one you could walk up to a window and, and ask for something that would have some snacks and things that maybe could be used by campground hosts and hikers. No plans to run a lift, no plans to have the Albion grill open for any food service. We would have restrooms open in the Albion ticket office or the Albion grill. We are looking to that remodeling the Albion ticket office restrooms this summer. So they will be offline at some point in time and we would use the ones in the grill for the summer. In regards to the discussion that was had a little bit earlier about the USFA and the direction to go. I'd just like to, a few comments I would make is, you know, the, when you look at the budget for the town of Alta. And you, you realize that 86% of the revenues that operate all of our services within the town come from taxes. And of that 86%, 74% come from a sales or a use tax. And only 26% are coming from property taxes. So we are heavily right now, currently a lot of the revenues that the town has to operate on come from the visitors, come from the users are spending money here in the town of Alta. It is not all being carried by the, the burden of the people, the property owners within the town of Alta. You know, we have, we have a great police force. We have, you know, the administration, the town does and all of those other things. All of that is currently available to the level it is because of the visitors that do come and pay sales tax or use tax and some for another to enable us to have these services. So trying to have that proper balance. I mean, we should maybe look at what other resort communities are doing and, and how that's balanced. I think you'll find that you know, we are benefiting from, the town does benefit secretly and the users that do come help us fund a lot of the services that we can, we have. Recognizing this property tax change to support, to join the USFA seems like a significant, or is a big change and it seems like a significant burden that appears to be, be all being placed upon the property owners. But I think you have to look at the picture as a whole, all of our revenue sources, all of our taxes and how we're operating. And when you look at it like that and you compare it to other entities and other resort communities in particular. I think it's in line and it's appropriate. And we would encourage from Alta Ski Lift Company, the town to, to get this issue resolved with the the UFFA, UFA, and it seems that the USFA, joining the USFA is the most appropriate course of action at this point in time. Let's see if you had anything else. I don't know if they have anything else on my list, other than, do you have any questions for the skier?
I just wanted to commend you for closing as swiftly as you did. Great, great job. I'm sure that was a difficult decision and tried to put that in writing on your website. I saw you getting kind of hammered from some folks and I thought it was misplaced. And so good job, good job with that.
Well, thank you.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I interrupted you. I apologize.
It was a, I mean, a lot happened in the three hours from, I just had met with all my management team and we'd sent everybody out the door to, to for a normal day, the next day, and then the next three hours, a lot changed. So, but it was the right move, the right thing for us to do. You know, we have people that have beat us up and people that have applauded us. Likewise, we have that similar situation with the current uphill policy here within the town of Alta. We have those that are are not happy with it. It considers us being socially irresponsible for allowing uphill traffic. And, and then we have a lot of people that are very appreciative. And we've been, uh, been working closely with Harris and the Forest Service through this issue to try to figure out how to appropriately do what we're doing in, in a way that minimizes risk and provides access to the forest that's out there. So we're that continues to go on. That's evaluated every day whether we should be continuing to do that, but it's not purely our decision. It's a decision that has to involve the town, the county and the Forest Service as we move forward in any direction in that regard.
I also just wanted to say, and I don't know if you can see, I'm the bridge. You're doing an excellent job on this uphill thing and the amount of work and the people and the cats and the groomers and the patrol. I mean, it's an awful lot of work for a closed area and it's going very, very well. I think a lot better recently. I mean, you don't have any say over how many people come and stand at the beginning of the summer road, but thank you. It's been, it's been an excellent job and I get a lot of compliments on what you've been doing with that. So.
Thank you.
Can you speak, your decision making around that at all, Mike, with regard to how it's evaluated daily? The risks and the rewards, just as it doesn't make the lift company any money. I'm curious as to why, why we're an outlier based on the county we're in and, and Summit County.
Well, part of the challenge that we have here is because we have a mix of private and public lands and there's no really trailheads or developed public trailheads outside the ski area services. You know, we could close the uphill traffic and close our restrooms, but that is not in the best interest, I believe, of the town of Alta or the people that live here because then people would still come flood the north side of the canyon, flood Grizzly Gulch with no service. And so as we kind of looked at that, you know, that when we had that storm a couple of weeks ago and we were closed, we closed uphill traffic where we, we closed our restrooms too, because you know, that was on this side of the, of the road and that became a little bit of an issue and immediately Harris called and the forest service called and asked, you know, if we would consider opening those restaurants back up. So we kind of decide, decide that was probably the best thing to do as a, a partner in this community is to provide restrooms. And, and then, and then opening up the mountain helps us to disperse the people that are coming. So they're not all congregating in one place and spreading out. So that's, it's kind of that decision we look at, we look at that on a daily basis. We are faced with some risks that we have employees that have to clean those restrooms. You know, and it's, they, they have concerns that, you know, they're maybe having the highest risk in our company at this point in time because they're going into where the most, having to potentially the most contact with someone that could, could be here with the virus. So we look at that, we're in communication with Harris and the Forest Service. Our position is, is if we get to a point that we need to close that, that the whole town should be closed. There should be no uphill traffic in the town of Alta on private or public lands and we would close the parking lots at the same time. And have the town just be open for visitors and employees as needed. There's some, been some question as Harris and I have dealt with the Forest Service, whether we can do that without the Forest Service's blessing. And so it's, it's kind of a three-way discussion we have on an ongoing basis to determine if we get to a point that some, we need to change what we're doing, it's going to involve all three of us. Is that correct, Harris?
Yeah, I know. I think you, you put that just right, Mike. If the ski area were to close the parking lots, their parking lots, and I said something about this in a newsletter column today. The forest, the Forest Service thinks they have to be involved in that decision. They would be fine with closing the parking lots to avoid gatherings. But closing the Forest Service ground that is even under the special use permit was a little bit problematic from the point of view of the Forest Service because they're worried about where everybody else would go. It would not stop people coming up Little Cottonwood Canyon. They go, I mean, White Pine would be very crowded. Superior would be crowded. Snowbird made it very clear to me that they will not prohibit hiking on their private ground, which is quite a bit about of what is just above the town of Alta. So and then there's parking, there could be parking outside of the parking lots. And so there's, it's not a perfectly straightforward solution. In addition, Salt Lake County order and the governor's directive allow people to leave their homes and travel for outdoor recreation. And while we have actually been a little bit in front of the county on some issues, we've worked pretty hard to coordinate with them and not get too far out in front on, on the issues and for fear that they or the state would simply overrule us, which they have the authority to do. So those are some of the considerations from, from my point of view. I, I really appreciate what Mike, the, the communication between the ski area and the town, like Mike said, has been outstanding. It's one of the side benefits of the situation we're in is it's easy to find people, it seems. You know, I text Mike and I say, you got a minute to talk. And the next thing I know, my, my phone is ringing and that's actually been true for everybody because everybody's just kind of hanging around. Not that we're not working. I think we're all working pretty hard, but it's mostly right here at this screen.
And I would tell you, our, our objective is the, our company, Ski Lift Company is to try to keep all of our employees working with appropriately social distancing as long as we can, until we get to an order that changes that. So we can continue to, you know, provide them employment and they can take care of their families.
Yeah. We appreciate what you're doing, Mike. Obviously you're not making any revenue and I know this is a multimillion dollar hit to your, to your bottom line. Given the lack of revenue and the continuing expenses and one thing that I really appreciate is the service that you're providing in terms of being first responders to emergencies in our community along with the UFA and the marshals.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any, anything else for Mike? Okay. Thank you for.
Actually, I did. I had one other quick question. Forgive me. I just wondered, Mike, if you, because if the taxes do go up on property, of course, the ski lift company will be paying a great deal more. I, I wondered if you folks had done any ballpark figures about what, what that would be if we did join the UFA.
Um, I think we went out and looked at it and thought it increased. I mean, I think we calculated it at one time. I don't have that number off the top of my head though. And you know, I think we were oh, I don't, yeah, I would have to go look.
That's okay. I was just curious.
We did look at it and we looked at, you know, the impact and, and we just didn't know that there was a better answer. Given, you're given the capabilities that the town has to raise, raise revenues or we're kind of maxed out on the sales tax pretty close. And there's the transit room tax, but that's kind of one-sided. It just seemed like that's an appropriate way to go, particularly a 50% of the, the property tax base is commercial here in the town too.
Thanks.
Okay.
I, sorry, I just one comment. I, I wanted to add my kudos as well, Mike, in that plowing the summer road is really helpful. We're trying not to use our OSV. And so with it being plowed periodically, it really helps being able to walk on that roadway. So thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
All right. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the consent agenda, the March 11th, 2020 meeting minutes treasures report with highlights and staff report. Is there a motion to approve those, to approve the consent agenda?
Was there a second?
Okay. Thank you. Is a motion was made by Cliff and seconded by Elise. I'll just point out on the budget highlights aspect that we had a pretty good, we've had a pretty good year and even though the year got cut six weeks short. I think that we're going to be in pretty good shape through this budget year. We'll have an amended budget, of course, to discuss. But I think we're going to be okay. I'm assuming, we have Piper and I've been working to figure out what we, based on previous years revenue from the middle of March to the end of the ski season through the end of June, what we would expect not to be taking in. But I don't think it's going to be appreciably big hit. What we're doing going forward is assuming, and I, I don't mean to jinx anybody, but like Mike said, it's quite uncertain what's going to happen this summer. So since the bulk of our revenue is not in the summer, we're in much better shape, I think, than some ski towns that have a lot of summer business. You know, I, I don't, I can't imagine what's happening to, say, Aspen or Telluride or Jackson's, you know, budget picture. Or Park City for that matter, although I did hear something about that from Andy Bierman, yeah, in a CWC meeting this week. So I think, I think that we'll be making an assumption of basically zero revenue until November, which is I hope way overly conservative. Any, any other discussion about the motion that's before us?
Did you see that?
Mike Mon had a comment.
Okay, Mike, go ahead and then I'll ask you, Sheridan. You gotta unmute yourself, Mike.
Okay. Lost my screen or something. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Just, you know, we've had quite a discussion within the ski industry of what we think this is. Wrong term. Fairly good consensus that we will not see a season like last season or how this season started going in the next season that, you know, if, if this virus is even under control, the impact on the economy that, you know, everyone is kind of projecting that, you know, we're thinking we could be down as much as 20 to 25% for next season. Just wanted to share that with you as you consider your budget going forward.
Yeah, we're, we're talking can be about how to be quite conservative. Sheridan?
Sorry, I just seen that Mike wanted to make a comment and wasn't sure if you were aware. So.
Got it. Okay. All right. Cliff, you unmuted yourself. Did you have something you wanted to add?
Thanks.
Okay. All right. So I'll call the question on the approval of the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify. All right. So I'll call the question on the approval of the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Okay, I got some thumbs up and I got some ayes and he opposed. Okay, that was carried unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Good. We're 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 right on schedule, just about a couple of minutes within. U F A report, Jay. If you'd like to let us know what's going on.
Hello, how is everybody?
Hanging in there.
I wish I were up there with y'all. I think you tend to be safer up there than we are down here. I just wanted to review a couple of things with you. I don't. So I sent in a report for the first quarter of this year based on the call volume. If you if you haven't seen that, I'm happy to go over it. I was just reviewing that and I think that there was a typo on there. They had indicated that there were fifty-one total incidents, and that's not correct. There were sixty-four as I'm adding them up individually. So for January, February, March, sixty-four total incidents. Significant slowdown, obviously, with March and the ski areas shutting down in years past. Pretty evident that that not as many calls. So the the crew down at one thirteen has been hunkered down as well. Still available and and ready to respond. But just with the amount of visitors up there, decreasing the call volume has gone down. As you can imagine, we've been extremely busy just in the planning phase and the planning process here at U F A. Making sure that we are in a position to be able to respond and be able to 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 help and do our part as as things continue to get busier. Luckily, it just has been just the planning process and the planning phase. And I'm hoping that we benefit from watching what has happened across the country and other parts of the country that have been faced with this prior to us. I think that that is going to help us significantly. And the things that we've been able to put in place, both for us as emergency responders as well as the hospitals. So I'm hoping that we'll be in a good position to respond as we see more and more people that come COVID positive. I don't know if Chris wanted the latest numbers, but the latest numbers as far as Salt Lake County is concerned, this was as of two o'clock this afternoon, eight hundred and sixty-eight positive confirmations of COVID within Salt Lake County. Of those seventy-eight are hospitalized and to date that we have seven deaths within Salt Lake County. They are keeping track of the number of beds that are available in our hospitals. I heard Sheridan ask a question about that. So Salt Lake County is is keeping tabs on the number of beds available in the hospitals as well as the number of I C U beds that are available. Right now, we we've been visiting the hospitals almost daily and staying in touch with them as they are our partners to to make sure that the things that we're doing in cooperation with them are are working. And the hospitals are seeing they're empty right now for the most part. People are not going there, which is good. So we have space available. Our call volume overall is down from historical call volume during the same month and years past. So that's good. People aren't calling as as much. And we're, I think that part of that is the the media involvement, educating people about what's appropriate to call for, taking care of themselves and staying put in home and isolating themselves. So that seems to be working. We are keeping track of our personnel and and making sure that that our personnel is is appropriately equipped so that when they do respond to to the possibility of anyone that that may have COVID or have been exposed to anybody that does, we get notifications that we can prepare and plan for that as we're responding to those calls. And make sure that those that that do have interaction with those patients are appropriately have their personal protective equipment on. So our plan when we do that is we we limit, we we're doing things completely different than than we have in the past. And it's been hard for us to do that. When we go on a call, usually we're all hands on deck and we're still all hands on deck, but we're doing so in a reserved, in an observed way. So initially, it's one person that makes contact with the patient with a second person ready to to jump in and help them if need needed. And then the rest of the crew is is waiting outside in communication with the crew that's inside. But we're just trying to limit our exposure to the possibility. We're trying to to make sure that that we're not getting sick so that we have staff available as this as this changes over time. At this point, we've had two hundred and sixty-eight responses to possible COVID scenarios. Of those, twelve hundred and seventy of our personnel have been exposed. But they've been exposed with P P E on. And so we we don't automatically test any of those people, but we document that they have had a possible. And we don't, we don't do any testing. We we ask that the people are careful. They take their P P off appropriately so that there's minimal exposure. And then if they do start to have any kind of signs and symptoms, we automatically isolate them. And we get them tested at that point. So to this point, we've only had twenty-six of our people that have had what we would call symptoms. And in that we test after that, twenty-six operational people. Of those twenty-six people, only one has has come back with a positive test. And that one person had traveled just prior to them becoming ill. And so it's likely that they they were exposed somewhere outside of the Salt Lake area and brought it back with them. So we're lucky that we've only had one person that's tested positive so far. And they've actually gone through their cycle and they're back to back to work. They've had their fourteen days. They're now symptom free and they're back to work. So I think we're doing a good job of keeping tabs on our own people. We have plans in place to take care of 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 our personnel as well as their families if they are exposed or they have any any kind of issues so that we can immediately take them out of the mix and make sure that they're not exposing other U F A personnel or people in the public so that we're not spreading this ourselves. We are working closely with Salt Lake County Emergency Management. They have their incident management team set up. But we have also set up a separate incident management team just for U F A and just for our own incident response. We do daily shift briefing with that incident management team that goes out to all of our shift personnel. So that happens every forty-eight hours as we change shifts. So we do a short ten to fifteen minute briefing, letting the the crews that just come on shift know what the the most up to date information is. Know if there's any change in in how we're proceeding so that they have the most up to date information. On the odd days in between that, we have a planning sessions where we plan for the coming day. So it's it's set up just like a large incident would be on a fire or an earthquake or any kind of disaster where it's the incident management system where you have an operations component, planning component, logistics component, and a finance component. And all the all of those things are set up to to make sure that we're managing this appropriately. It's been, it's been interesting. It's different for us because it's not an incident that you can see. As you guys are dealing with the same thing, it's, I mean, it's easy to, I say it's easy. It's not easy to deal with a large fire, but you can see it. And you and you kind of know when you're making progress, or this is, this is something that is completely out of the ordinary for us. So it's been, it's been a work in progress. I can assure you that there's, there's great people, super smart people working on this and making sure that the services that we're providing are the best that we can provide. We have contingency plans in place. What's called COOP, so continuity of operations plans. So based on staffing, based on call volume, based on what's happening within the hospitals, those plans are in place to be able to maneuver and and move personnel into different areas to be able to continue providing both medical service and fire service. You know, that's one of the things is just because this is happening doesn't doesn't stop everything else that's going on. We're still having fire calls. We're still having car accidents and all the things that we normally would. We're just approaching it a little bit differently. Any questions for me so far? I mean, that's that's a lot, but I just wanted to give you a little bit of background in how we're approaching this and and what we're doing as a fire department and a EMS department.
Thank you so much for everything you're doing and all of your crews. I'm sure, I'm sure we all feel that way. Just a couple of outline questions, if you don't mind. So I've heard that domestic violence calls have been going up all over the country. Are you are you folks some of the first responders to those? Can you speak to whether or not that's really happening in Salt Lake County and and how you're managing that?
Haven't seen specific numbers, but I've heard the same reports that that there has been an increase in those those calls. We work cooperatively with our law enforcement partners to respond to those. Anytime we have any kind of domestic violence call, we work hand in hand with our law enforcement partners to make sure that we're responding appropriately and and that our personnel is safe. You know, that's been one of the challenges for us is, like you said, normally we go in and and we have several people that are are going in to help out, but but we don't want to expose several people if if somebody is sick. So it has been a little bit of a different approach for us. It's a, it's a work in progress, but there is definitely a significant uptick in those types of calls.
Margaret. It looked like you wanted to pose a, say something.
Yeah, thank you, Harris. It was just based upon Jay, your comment earlier that you had provided call volumes or information earlier, and I didn't see that. So maybe it went to the mayor or the clerk's office or something. But so it was just that I was interested in seeing that and I didn't get it so far unless somehow I missed it.
I can email it as soon as we're done here.
Great, thank you.
One, one thing I'm I need to add as part of our continuity of operations plan. One of the things that may happen, we have four, four of our stations have crews that are set up with both a fire engine and an ambulance, similar to how they're set up at one thirteen. So they have a crew that based on what the call is, they will either take the fire engine or they'll take the ambulance. So if it gets really busy in the Salt Lake Valley and we need to staff additional ambulances, the plan is to take those ambulances and staff them to be placed in different parts of all of the U F A's response area to be able to respond to calls as they're happening on an as needed basis. So that may take the ambulance out of Station one thirteen and put it somewhere else based on the need, the current need. But it would not take the crew out so that you would still have paramedic response. They would just be responding on fire engine instead of the ambulance. And then the ambulance for that medical response if needed from somewhere else in the Salt Lake Valley.
Okay, thank you, Jay. Are you gonna, are you gonna, can you can you stay with us for a little bit longer? Yeah, because we may have, when we get to the U F A, U F S A membership question, there may be some issues that come up that we could ask you. Could want to ask you. Thank, thank you. Okay, are there questions regarding the departmental reports? Mike, do you want to say anything beyond what we have already, what we already know?
You know, I I don't think that I have a lot. Could you hear me okay?
Yes.
I don't have a lot things to say that haven't already been said in this meeting, but I do want to thank everybody, in particular, the ski area for working with us, you know, daily so that we can maintain a good rescue posture. Generally speaking, you know, we we believe we're seeing substantial compliance with your this social distancing and getting regulations for asking the public to participate with us on. We've only had a few times, including one this morning. I'm curious if it's the same event that Margaret saw. We did get a call about a gathering. It turned out to be a family unit. And at our request, they were happy to disperse. And so we've we've had good cooperation from the public. One of the interesting things that we've been doing is, you know, the town does not have a local health component. So the Salt Lake County Health Department, you know, serves as our health authority. And in the law enforcement role, we've tried to be useful in gaining intelligence and real-time information on what our COVID exposures may be. I think it's probably pretty common knowledge in the community that we've had at least one lodge that's had guests contact them after they enter their home state, you know, they've tested positive for the virus. So what we've been doing is is our own sort of analog contact tracing, making the rounds daily with lodge management, employees, everybody in the community that we can, homeowners. Just to make sure that everybody's working off the same page. There's a general awareness. You know, those potentials. Luckily thus far, we haven't had any residents, current employees or staff become ill with the virus. We've chased down a couple of pieces of information and in some cases just out and out rumors about lodge employees returning to their home states and testing positive with the virus. So we're, we're maintaining a spatial awareness so that if we have to deploy our first responders to any building in town, you know, that we've got the intelligence to support extra protective measures if needed. Because we look operate at our own dispatch center, we don't have all the technology that Salt Lake County has available in their CAD dispatching system. They're able to flag addresses for what they call universal precautions. So if somebody has a communicable disease that's known or maybe, you know, violent history, any responders would be alerted to that. And also, we have to rely a little bit on our memory. We reached out to Salt Lake County Health to ask us how they would communicate problem addresses to us. Their response is we would not because you're not a health agency. So understanding that reality, we've taken extra measures with VAC, the nine-one-one call-taking center. And we have their hundred percent support and cooperation that they will share all flag address information with us. And so far, there's been no addresses in Alta that have been flagged with these kind of hazards. Other than that, you know, I'm open to take any questions that anybody might have.
I just want to say one, one, I guess footnote to what Mike just said about the Salt Lake County Health Department. It was in a meeting, I've been attending meetings that the mayor of Salt Lake County has held for, it's her, it's her command staff and all of the mayors in Salt Lake County. We've been having meetings every they're scheduled for Friday afternoons, but they're they've occurred more often than that. And in one of those, this issue of the CAD system flagging addresses where people were had had been identified to have a problem like this came up and I asked, was there was VAC aware of this? And and they promised me that that would be an alternative way of getting that information. And it sounds, Mike, like that's actually, they've come through with that, although I suppose we haven't really tested that system because we haven't had a case in Alta.
No, and you know, as a backup to that, you know, we've we've instituted procedures at the Marshall's Office for distancing all of our personnel and how we're rotating through shared quarters, you know, the decontamination of shared workspaces and all that. Sort of lost my And all that, um, sort of lost my uh trade of thought, but um, what I was getting at is one of the procedures is where, if we're responding to a building while we're in route, we're going to be making that call to make sure that we have not flagged. So we're just not going to take, you know, faith that the system's working as promised. Um, we're going to get the additional measures to verify.
Yeah, and just for uh everybody, uh, the town council members' information, um, just uh, in the last few days, uh, Mike and Chris and I, uh, with the rest of the staff, uh, participating in the conversation, talked about an ultraviolet uh device that will allow the police uh, uh, anyone actually, but for the marshals to decontaminate their uh the small items, radios, et cetera. Okay, any, uh, any additional comments on the staff reports? I mean, on the departmental reports? Uh, Margaret, that looked like you might want to say something, but I, okay, okay. All right, then I'm going to move on to the uh mayor's report. Like I started off this meeting with, it seems like a very long time since we've met, although it's uh only a month, it feels like uh feels much longer than that. Um, and obviously COVID-19 has been the main event, Altis. I, I, events that have been canceled that I was going to go to included the UFA Gala, the Alta Gala, a couple of doctor's appointments, classes at the university, meetings at the university and the school play for Kate's nine-year-old. So um, all of those were, were given up. I have been part of, uh, like I just said, I have been part of the Salt Lake County Mayor's Weekly Update Meeting, and I've had several conversations with Erin Mendenhall, who I've been impressed with, um, and didn't know uh until she took office. Um, we had some kind of interesting conversations between uh, uh, the mayors of Salt Lake City, Moab, Park City and me uh to talk about how to how to deal with the situation of so many visitors coming into our uh locations. We've talked about the fact that I've issued four emergency orders and there's a pretty good timeline and review of them on the website and in my uh most recent newsletter, I amplified some of what I said about the about uh, I, I amplified some of uh the purpose of order number four, which I think had confused some people. It was not directly, it was not meant to be targeted primarily at second homeowners. It was that our previous orders to this one were about short-term rentals and there didn't seem to be a very good legal way to keep people from renting long-term because people do that all the time uh as just part of the course of their lives. And uh, what I was mostly concerned about was lots of people hearing that there were empty condos and other opportunities to get out of uh hotspots by coming to Alta and renting starting, say, April 1st through June 30th. And that was a big target of that proclamation. Uh, I, we added that uh second homeowners specifically were also included, but it was not meant to single them out. I already have talked, said something about the, about our budget assumptions. Um, I know I filled out my census form on April 2nd, um, less than a week ago. Again, that feels like six months ago to me somehow, but and I just wonder what's going to happen with the census. I hope that, um, I hope it's accurate. On the March 17th UEFA board meeting, we mostly talked about HR issues that were quite detailed. There were some, there are a handful of several longstanding employees who had a complicated HR issue about Medicare, Medicare contributions. There were some, uh, it turns out that a number of UFA employees are uh in the National Guard and there was a question about how to handle their leave. And then, as I mentioned earlier in this meeting, the UFA has had some uh unbudgeted for uh overtime costs because of some uh smaller than desired staffing levels. And I know, uh, Jay, that there's been some uh efforts to increase recruitment. Um, and I, you, you reported on that in the last meeting that the, that that's been going pretty well. So, um, I know Chief Peterson has some strategies for how to deal with that. Um, on March 18th, we had an earthquake. As you all know, my feeling was we got a pandemic, we got an earthquake. I was just waiting to see if we got locusts and then I knew we were really in trouble. I got a little bit of heat uh about the earthquake personally uh from Clint Meacom, county's emergency manager, because on March 18th, I or, or rather during our 52-hour-long interlodge, I uh met with uh Clint in the uh Emergency Operations Center along with Jay. And during that event, I said my fingers were crossed that we don't have an earthquake, but I did not say knock on wood and Clint called me on not having said, so having said that. Uh, there was a CWC meeting on March 20th. It was a land tenure committee meeting uh on which I sit. The question was really what to do regarding a replacement for the land exchange from Mountain Accord and the first year of the Central Wasatch Commission. I don't have, I, I don't, I don't, the question was raised. I don't, did not walk away from that meeting with a clear sense of what the answer was going to be. So I don't have a lot to report on that. Um, in the April 9th meeting of the CWC whole board, we passed an amended ILA which will be coming to the town council for approval. Uh, we omitted the positions of the uh appointed commissioners representing the interest of UDOT and the Wasatch back, converting the Wasatch back, appointed commissioner position, which is currently filled by someone from Summit County, that is Chris Robinson, into the membership of the Summit County into the CWC. Uh, of course, they would have to join the ILA, providing uh for the appointment of ex officio commissioners. Um, for example, the UTA or UDOT, if they were so inclined, but UTA is the big is the party who were really interested in making sure that they come to the meetings to allow the town of Brighton to join. Uh, and then we discussed possible budget issues given uh a couple of things. One is uh, and like I said a few minutes ago, I think our budget at least 19, 20 is okay. 2021, Mike addressed, if we lose 20 or 25% of our sales tax revenue, that's a big issue for the town. But um, we're not in as bad shape as some of the towns and the, the other members of the CWC could well be. So far, Summit County and Park City have not remitted what they owe for 19 uh, the 19, 20 budget year. So there, I'll have to do something about that. And it's not clear that they are going to give their full amounts of uh I think it's a hundred and uh seventy-five thousand dollars respectively. They, uh, there is not a good formula for assessing the different communities. And it makes sense to me that you would be asking me, well, why should I, why should we pay fifteen thousand dollars instead of ten thousand dollars or twenty thousand dollars? And for us, fifteen thousand dollars is not nothing, but um, a hundred thousand dollars that Park City uh paid the first year and was assessed the second year is they're balking at that. And then we heard about a update on the mountain transportation system recommendations. You can go to the Utah Public Notice website and see the PowerPoint presentation for, from this, but the mountain transportation system recommendations that came out of the staff to the CWC includes the scope, the attributes, the objective and modes and management, and none, none of it will be surprising to anybody who's been paying attention to the CWC or to Mountain Accord for the last. I don't know, when did Mountain Accord start, Chris? Was it six years ago? Eight years ago?
Twenty thirteen.
Seven years ago.
Late twenty thirteen, yeah.
The temporary dog authorizations that um are issued between the dates of uh March 5th and April 2nd, 2020 include uh a 10-day per, oh, and Molino and Grizzly Gulch, uh, seven days to Richard Abelson uh on Blackjack Road, a 30-day uh permit to Jeff Selikoff in Powder Ridge, 30-day permit to Paxton Mater in uh Powder Ridge. Hannah McPherson and Patrick Hogle got a 30-day uh permit in Sugarplum and Brooke Masters, McMaster's got a 13-day uh which ends today, actually, in Albion Basin. The upcoming public meetings that I intend to uh, attend uh are the CWC Budget Committee meeting on April 6th, uh, that's at 4:00 PM. None of these are going to be on, uh, in real locations. Um, they're all going to be online. So the CWC website would give you information as would the Utah Open Meetings website. The UFA Finance Committee uh meeting that we're going to talk about here in a few minutes is on April 16th at 7:30 in the morning. Salt Lake County Hearing for the CDBG and Other Grants. I forgot to make a note of the date of that. It's at four o'clock on, um, let me just take a look. I think it's the 17th. Yes. Yeah, it's four o'clock on the 17th of April. And then the CDCWC meets again on May 4th. Okay, any questions about any of that report?
I, I did have a question. I thought I understood in one of the emergency proclamations that emergency dog licenses were not going to be issued during this time period of the pandemic. I may have misread that. And the second thing was, I just wanted to comment, what I was asking for in terms of the upcoming events was not was not to ensure that you're busy, Mayor, because I know you are, um, or to hear all of those, but it was more interested in what events the Alta community might be interested in going to, particularly for Alta, like our upcoming meetings or something like that. I mean, it's okay for you to do what you just did about all the committee meetings and, and so on that you're going to, but that wasn't my original request.
Okay, so, so Margaret, um, can you, can you say the request again? Because I, I must have misunderstood what you were asking me to do.
Yeah, I, I think, um, what I was asking for was, um, like the upcoming date of a town council meeting, the upcoming date of a planning commission, the upcoming date of things like that for Alta specifically versus um, all the things that, that you're doing to represent that.
Okay, got it. Um, well, I'm, so the next town council meeting will be at 5:00 PM on uh, May 6th. I don't know if there's a planning commission, a, a need for a planning commission uh meeting in uh April or not, but it would be held on the 28th at 3:00 PM. John?
And so far, we don't have any business and talking to the commission members uh that I've talked to so far, it's like we're just kind of on hold while this is going on. So there's nothing pressing, no business, so they're happy to just uh stay on hold for a little while. We won't do that forever, but we'll continue holding.
Okay, good. Thank you. And um, all but the, I, I, I didn't tell you the starting dates of those, Margaret, of those dog licenses, but all but the last one um were before that uh started before that period, the period of the emergency. Um, the last one, uh, the, I, I don't, Jan might want to address it. I can't remember how we, what, what was?
We made a decision um to stop offering them after that one was issued.
Oh, okay.
We send it.
Okay. Um, yeah, okay. So, uh, let's see, the next item on the agenda, I've lost my second page of my agenda. Okay, um, so the next item on the agenda is the discussion of possible action regarding the resolution uh for uh the town of Alta's intent to be annexed into the UFA S A boundary. That's Resolution 2020 R6 that we uh discussed during the work session. Um, so the first, well, I think what we need is we need a motion uh and a second on this uh, on this uh resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Uh, moved uh by Cliff and seconded by Elise. Okay, we, we had a conversation about this. I don't think that Jay was uh on that conversation. But the one, one issue that I would like, like to ask Jay about is to say, if you could, could you say something about the uh three versus four member crew at station 113? And uh, I'm not asking you about cost. I'm asking you uh about the operational issues.
So, um, as far as operational issues, the three versus four. Staffing configuration, I think we talked a little bit about that at the last council meeting. Three versus four doesn't necessarily change what the crew can do in this situation.
Jay, I'm having a little bit of a hard time hearing you. Is, are the people as well? Yeah.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
That's better. Yep.
How about now? Close to the screen.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Um, so there are certain things that uh, that crews can do if you have four versus if you have three. Um, if there's an imminent rescue involved, uh, then a crew of three could still affect that rescue. Um, but typically, in any type of fire situation, we follow guidelines that are referred to as the two in, two out. So if you send two people in, um, to uh do an interior attack on a fire, you want to have two people ready to go um, on the outside of the structure to go in to help them if, if they were to need assistance um, or um, if they needed to switch out at any point. Uh, but like I said, if you, if you did have an imminent rescue, then then they would still choose to do that based on what the situation was like. And obviously, it's, it's like any other labor situation. You can accomplish more work with four people than you can with three people. Um, but as far as what they would do initially, they're still going to be able to, to, to start work and, and, and affect a rescue if possible. Uh, and knowing that uh backup is, is also coming from the valley. So any type of, of call, uh, if it's a fire call, there's, if it's, if it's an alarm, um, it may only be 113 that's dispatched initially, but if it's, if it is a fire, that initial dispatch will include what is referred to as a first alarm assignment. If it's for a commercial structure, um, that first alarm assignment is slightly different than if it's just for a residential structure. So all of that is, is something that comes into play as, as the crew responds to the fire and it's something that they're thinking about. You know, what, what is it we're responding to and what is our backup that's coming up to help us and how far away are they? So in the fires we had last winter, all of those things came into play. It was snowy. It was difficult for, for uh vehicles to get up the canyon. Um, and that's the same circumstances that happened when you, when we had the Hellgate fire several years ago. It's a little easier to to take care of that sort of thing in the summertime when when there's not snow on the road, but. Yes, that's a long answer to your question, but as far as the three versus four. Doesn't change significantly what we would do. Really, if there was a rescue that needed to happen.
Is there a station that has a three member crew seasonally and a four member crew seasonally in the U F A system? That you know of?
No.
Okay, and then the other question that's come up. A couple of times is. Excuse me. What happens? If there's a need to rescue someone. In Albion Basin in the wintertime or in West Grizzly or Grizzly Gulch.
So. The fire department crews that are at one thirteen. They would work in conjunction, depends on where the the rescue was needed, we work closely with W B R. And also with Salt Lake County Search and Rescue in order to to be able to respond to those incidents. I think it would depend on where the incident was occurring, what the nature of it was and. You know, if it was winter, if it was summer and and. The crew that was there to respond, we don't want to make the situation worse. And so there are times when we would probably not send people into an incident, so. Nor do we have some of the people that would be equipped or trained to respond in the wintertime to. Like the like an avalanche burial or something where you would need to have trained professionals responding to that. So that's when we would work in conjunction with W B R, with the Alta Marshals Office or U P D, depending on where it was. And also Salt Lake County Search and Rescue.
Let me ask Mike Mon some a question that's related to that, if you don't mind. So my supposition has been that the Alta Ski Lifts would do everything it can. Especially in its capacity as a first responder to help the U F A get to, say, an Albion Basin cabin. Yeah, that'd be correct. Yeah, okay, thank you.
So I can answer, just from working up there, the Alta Ski Patrol is great with helping us with with those sorts of things. If we, you know, and even if there's a a skier on the mountain that has a significant medical problem. They've been great helping us get to that skier if possible, sometimes around an area that's that that can be accessed by. Snowmobile or snowcat and we're able to 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 get to them in a pretty quick manner and able to help. But that depends on where they're located, a time of day, those sorts of things.
You're muted, Mayor.
Yeah, I I I just realized. Mike, Maury, did it look like you wanted to say something or?
No, I was just being prepared to say something, you know, I guess I would add. You know, we train for these scenarios with Unified Fire and the Alta Ski Lifts Company. We've got a considerable amount of experience accessing. Homes that, you know, are seasonally not available by the road and, you know. An incident comes to mind, you know, right next to Margaret's house where we had a carbon monoxide poisoning. You know, that involved all residents of the house who were unconscious. And, you know, we were able to immediately make use of snowcats, snowmobiles. Get our personnel and U F A's personnel to that home. Really as efficiently as if they could have driven to it with their equipment, so. We're we're aware of that and we train for it, we, you know, we prepare for it. And, you know, the lift company has always been there to give us that kind of access.
Thank you, Mike, for adding that. Let me just say that when when we get to the point of calling this question. What my intention is is. In either case, I am going to attend the, I'm just looking at this list of, I'm just looking at my calendar. I I the U F A Budget Committee meeting on April sixteenth will, I will attend that in any case. The budget gets determined by the full U F A Board in in May, it gets reviewed and then in June it gets finalized by the full board. If we do pass this resolution, as I said to you in an email, I'll prepare the next draft budget with some U F S A assumptions in there. If we don't pass the resolution, I'm going to have to figure out a way to come up with. This large amount, what it looks to me like is that property taxes for our property owners are going to go up. In either case. If we join the U F S A and I I I haven't seen that what the tax bill, the tax rate would be. For the subsequent year, I've only seen the contract. Rate, although it may be that on that document that I shared with you. Where is that? The rate may be shown on that document in the material that. It's twenty twenty one. It doesn't actually show a rate, it just talks about the costs, best I can see. In any case, the five thirty three, it would be the number under current. For nineteen twenty six twenty seven. But going forward, we know that the number would be higher under the contract, the direct contract. And I think that our property tax would have to raise about four hundred and seventy five thousand additional dollars. So the difference between the two, in terms of its effect on our property tax, is not. Very large, it seems to me, and as I've expressed to you before, I think there are other advantages of being in the U F S A. Besides the the fact that it's a lower total price. Okay, so. Any discussion, further discussion?
Well, I'm going to vote for the resolution, I think it's the only way forward. I. I want to ask. Our council members to come along on this vote and make it unanimous. But at the same time, I want to ask. The mayor primarily to become an advocate for. The town of Alta to have a four member crew in Station one thirteen. And I think that in turn supports the council in. Showing to our community and our taxpayers. That we're. We're advocating for our community, I don't, I don't think there's another community. In Salt Lake County, or not many in Utah. That has a fire station that is so isolated and vulnerable. It's it's great to. Bring other crews, Station one sixteen or wherever up the road, when the road is open. That's awesome, but I think the reason for a four member crew instead of a three member crew. Is a low probability and high risk event. And we've we've learned a little bit more in the last month or so about those kinds of events. Low probability, high risk. We have to advocate for our community to have a four member crew on Station one thirteen.
I'm certainly happy to bring that before the, I I. I do believe I have advocated on behalf of the town in general and I have brought this issue up. And I will be happy to continue to bring this issue up and make this request. If I am on the board of the U F S A, I will be in a, I think, a better position to request that. Allocation of resources.
Yes.
And I'll add that I think that the isolation is, I mean, that fifty two hour inter lodge event. I think is. A pretty compelling. Example of why Alta. Needs additional resilience.
I have to share that I have grave concerns about the softness of the numbers, both from U F A's projected cost. As well as U F S A's. I'm particularly worried about how, because we have a mechanism to tax residential property owners. That's the route that we're choosing without knowing. In my mind, being able to ask different business entities in town, exactly what will this cost? And what will you be contributing in relation to how much you're using the services? That we are attempting to come up with this enormous increase in bill. So I have to share those concerns in. Speaking to how that will influence my vote.
I I'm not sure I understood exactly Sheridan, but it didn't sound like anything that. Any of the people on this in this meeting can do at the moment will address those concerns or did I misunderstand?
No, I I mean, I think it's quite difficult based on the data that's been provided so far, and I appreciate everyone's hard work, including yours, Mayor. As well as Margaret, your work with Jay. But it sounds like there's anywhere from sixty to eighty percent of the calls being driven by Alta Ski Lift clientele. Which could well be lodge clientele that it happened to be on the hill that day, it could be residents that happened to be getting injured on the hill that day. But when I hear those, that wide variance in figures, when I hear, when I'm not able to find out. So what would the taxable contribution be then if we do increase it for everyone? And then be able to run the numbers in my head about, okay, so. Of course, taxes would go up for the Ski Lift Company as well as for the lodges, I'd love to see what those figures will be. In order to make an informed decision about, is this in any way equitable based on the actual usage? And without that information, I feel pressured to make a decision based on. Budgetary deadlines and it it concerns me greatly when it's such a large amount of money. And the answer has to be now, my general rule of thumb when it comes to that financially is if the answer has to be now, the answer has to be no. And I haven't.
What I don't understand exactly is, I mean, the tax rate will be the same for every property taxpayer. Sure, the property taxes are a matter of public record and so.
It's quite difficult to find out what that is though, based on the different ways that different properties are taxed. Particularly with the Ski Lift Company in coming up with, okay, so what will this do to the total taxation? And to be able to look at what that new figure might be in relation to the actual usage. And and the actual usage itself is a very soft number, anywhere from sixty to eighty percent or more, based on a lot of outliers.
Using the tax basis, the tax is the basis for the payment. Makes usage. Not matter anymore.
I understand.
Nobody's paid being being charged based on how much they use the service.
Sure, but I feel that there's a basic inequity there that needs to be addressed, I'd feel better looking at the justice of that inequity. If I knew what the figures were about what people were going to pay, should we choose to raise the funds in this way? Through a millage, through.
Isn't the assessed value of properties public information in Utah? And so you've had several months where you could have calculated those numbers yourself if you'd wanted to. What we do have is the total is three hundred million dollars and that's getting multiplied, that's where the five thirty three is coming from. So this is this is this is background work, I think, that any town council member, any member of the public could have done. Well, I haven't been interested in this question. So no, I don't, I don't know that, I I know my own condo. And we gave some, Chris, Chris Colley gave a number of examples of lodges and single property, a single. Single family houses and condos and we talked about what those examples ought to be. And so I I don't think they were unrepresentative examples, they were kind of average scenarios, as I recall, Chris. But so so that gives you some baseline assumptions about the average property. But it's true, we don't know, I don't know what the ski area is, tax bill is, but. For some reason, Mike, I remember a number of fifty thousand dollars is the amount that your taxes are going to go up. But I I don't, I don't remember where that number came into my head, but I I haven't really been concerned about this, Sheridan. And if you had asked me to look into this, I'm not sure I would have, I think my answer would have been. The information's public, go for it, because I got a lot on my plate.
I'm just thinking about how to be able to answer to our constituents, particularly individual residential property owners. How is this just based on our very limited usage and this very high potential tax increase for us?
We are being, my answer to that is we're going to get, we're going to pay the same thing as everybody else. That's that's my answer to when I've been asked that question. Now, I know people don't like it that their taxes are going up and the other thing that I say to them is what I said in a in a letter that I shared with the public. Or a letter to the public was. Rather than frame this as a huge loss, I've been framing as as a huge taking on of a burden. What I, the way I'm thinking about this is this very generous benefit is going away. That is that we were paying a lot less than our neighbors. Now, I I don't know, that doesn't seem to be helping you. Or some of our taxpayers and I can appreciate it, I I spent an hour and twenty minutes on the phone with. One of our taxpayers who says his taxes are going to go up, you know, by a couple thousand dollars and. Like I I, yes, but they've been low for a couple thousand, lower than they would have been. For years by that amount, so I I don't know what else to say in terms of the fairness question. Partly it's a matter of fairness and partly I would say to you, what do you propose, what's the alternative? And I I don't think there is a good alternative, a better alternative, this sucks in a lot of ways. I think you can argue that it's unfair, I've tried to argue that it's less unfair than some people seem to think. But I'm not arguing that this is a good outcome, it is just the best of the available ones, it seems to me.
Well, in in terms of fairness, when you talk about fire protection, it's not the same as a utility. Where I use ten gallons of water and you use. A hundred gallons of water, you should pay ten times more, this is public safety, we're all in this together. This is the protection of our community.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I own a property, a rental property down in Sandy and I pay. For fire and police protection for that property, have I had to use it since I've owned that home? No, I hope I don't have to, but it's there and it's part of being a homeowner. And like Kara said, I I think in some ways, we need to try to be fair to our neighboring communities, they've been doing this this way. And we've gotten a special deal which has been nice and unfortunately, the deal's going away. And we are being presented with two ways that to pay this bill. We can either join the U F S A and make this a fifteen percent property increase for everyone at Alta. Including the ski area, including the lodges. And that seems to be the best way to make it across the board. Or we could try to get it as a contracted rate with the town, but even if we increase sales tax and increase our property tax. So the max that we can, we're still going to be short and have to cut other things in our budget. And I can't think of anything that we can cut right now, I mean, I've looked at the, I've been on the Budget Committee for a couple of years now and it's. I can't think of any way we can come up with this money, especially with this upcoming year that we're going to have, if we have twenty five. I can't think of any way we can come up with this money, especially with this upcoming year that we're going to have if we have twenty-five percent less in sales tax revenue. I, I mean, this bill's going to change year to year. It's going to be based off of this new percentage of use. And I don't know how we can plan for that as a community. And this joining the U F S A just makes it so everyone pays the fifteen percent increase across the board.
You know, I think that if our sales tax went down by twenty-five percent. The, my estimate of four seventy-five, it could end up being more expensive for our property tax owners than joining the U F S A could be. Speaking to the question that Cliff brought up about. Lack of opposition, if not actual enthusiastic support of moving into the U F S A. I can tell you that the, the, the more we express that this is what we want to do. The more likely, and I know this is going to sound vague, the more likely I am to be able to get. A slow. Entrance, so to speak, a little bit of a grace period. Because I can go to the U F S A board and say, we want to join, but. Here's where we want your help. I think that they're less likely to be helpful if they think that we're going to end up having town council members rallying our taxpayers to oppose this move.
I, I don't know about rallying taxpayers. I, I obviously have a conflict of interest here. As others of us do as a property tax. Payer within the town. But it's not that I'm looking to rally people to oppose this as much as I. Wanted additional information. I came up with a suggestion of an alternative today. It was something that Polly said she could investigate. And so to go forward with the resolution as it's currently worded. And not allow us the opportunity to pursue a different alternative or a different approach. At the same time, or slowing down the need or seeking additional time to be able to do this. Is not to me the same as saying, I'm going to rally property owners in town to oppose a position that the town council is supporting. It seems to be more the idea of getting the information necessary so that we are as fully informed as we can be.
Well, I'm glad to hear that you would, it sounds like you would support a decision that the town council makes. Mike Maury, you wanted to jump in?
Hi, thanks, Mayor. You know, I don't know how well received this will be in. Particularly, you all know that I'm not very fond of saying nice things about funding. But I, I do, as a public safety. Person, I do want to urge the council to be a little cautious about. Facing decisions on who uses us the most. As, as an example, I, I can tell you that yesterday, we had a. Very dramatic pediatric emergency. In Alta. That originated from a business that I know doesn't call us very often for police or fire services. The response. That was given by U F A was phenomenal. I have no doubt in my mind. That the direct result was that a life was preserved. And. You know, it, it's a, it's a difficult decision, but I think. Along with who uses our, ours and the fire department services the most, we really have to look at. Ensuring that we're providing the highest quality service to everybody, regardless of how often they use it. You know, and, and that's your job to do it at the, you know, best financial option available, but. I, I just have to say, we need to be really careful about. The numbers game of, you know, where's U F A going more frequently? More importantly, are they providing us with the service we need? Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Well, I, I'd like to move us along because we're now at seven o'clock and we're a little bit behind our schedule now. So is this a reasonable time to call the question?
Mayor, you and I also had a discussion during the work session about requesting documents be. Documents that I received from Jay be attached to our record in some way.
Yeah, indeed. So without objection, let's, we can do that. I, I am going to vote in favor of the motion, but I will also say that I am a property owner and a taxpayer in Alta. So I also have. A conflict of interest, except that I'm actually going. To pay more, so I don't know exactly how that plays out, but I'll say that I have, I have that situation. Okay, so we're voting on. Let me just pull up the title of the document, make sure I get it just right. We are approving, Polly, you can, you can weigh in here. We are approving on our side a joint resolution of the Unified Fire Service Area. And they'll have their own resolution number and of the Town of Alta, which is Resolution Number twenty twenty R six. Declaring an intent to adjust the boundary of the Unified Fire Service Area to include the Town of Alta.
That's correct, and if you want to know, well, why don't you go ahead about this and then I can talk about timing if it's appropriate.
You know, maybe, maybe we can even just prepare a brief about the options there for the council members at some point. I don't know, it's just getting a little bit late. Okay, all those in favor of adopting Resolution twenty twenty R six, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, the resolution passes three to two. Okay. The next item on our agenda is a, a short presentation from the Wasatch Front Regional Council regarding transportation planning projects. Is that, I know we have our visitors with us. Is that still something we should do, Chris?
Alex just unmuted. Christie's there as well. We don't intend to take fifteen minutes. I think we asked for five on the agenda and you guys were feeling generous, so. I think I'll just turn it over to Alex for now and fill in blanks.
Can you hear me, Chris?
Yes.
Okay, I'll start my video too. Oh, good.
Clear. Oh, hey.
So I think we can do this in under five minutes. I know you've been there for a while. So you might remember that we came to you a few months ago. And we're working with Chris on kind of a way to prioritize some of the. Transportation and other projects. That, trying to share my screen, so one second.
You see, Jen, is he going to be able to share his screen?
I don't think I can.
Harris has been as a non-host.
Oh, I can, I can share my screen. I seem to have the option, so.
Okay.
But I don't know if Alex also has that option or not.
He should.
See a green bar on the right side of his screen.
Yeah, as far as, as far as I know, all participants can, can share screens at this moment.
It might just because I'm going off my browser, but I can just be brief, so. Chris put together, along with me, a, a document kind of highlighting a few of the. Most frequent projects we taught, we saw that came up in the previous planning processes. So it kind of outlines both, you know, high level, like what it is, what the benefits are, what some of the potential. Considerations would be and the potential next steps. Along with that, we shared a. A very brief survey that's already been taken by council member Morgan. So it's just kind of asking to rank the nine projects that we came up with. So just one through nine, and then this is just basically to give us a better idea what kind of the group thought is. Related to these various projects and then we'll go back and we'll kind of relook at those and then come to you with kind of like a discussion. Period kind of and get a little more information, but present a little bit more and then we'll have your rankings too, so that'll help us. Just move forward and our ultimate goal is to kind of, you know, pick four to five projects and move them forward either through. More public outreach, design considerations, or, you know, early concept development. So that's kind of the ask for you guys. I know it's kind of a crazy time and we hope to be there, but we think this, you know, if you could. Take a look at that, my emails on the handout that Chris provided. So, yeah, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm sorry, where is the survey?
So do you have the, it's called Alta Concepts Handout PDF? I think it went.
I, I, I can show this if you just give me a second.
Sure, I have transportation concepts or.
Yeah. Transportation Concepts Handout, yeah, it's on the first page.
Okay, the survey monkey.
Is this the document we're talking about?
That, that is.
Yep. So that, so a monkey, you know, here's the. You can just click on it.
And be careful not to hit done or complete on that survey monkey page because it will. It will record whatever you've done to the option so far. I found that out, so.
Do, do you need me to scroll through this in any, to other pages, pages?
If you just could go to the second page, Mayor, that'd be great. So this is kind, I just wanted, just for high level, this is what each of the nine projects will have a brief description, some of the benefits, considerations. Where some of the source material that we're bringing this to you was from, so in this one, the E I S and then the Active Transportation Implementation Project. Kind of, this one is a little extra that has a status and then, you know, if this was chosen as one of the top four to five projects, what some of the next steps would be. We don't intend this to be like if there's a voting order that that would be the end of it. We'd want to come back to you and kind of, you know, get your official buy off on these are the four to five projects that will be looked at further. I want to say that the ones that aren't the highest scoring, they're not bad projects, it's just at this time, we can only really focus on so much and part of this project. Talking with Chris and others is like, you know, we want it to be a manageable bite rather than kind of a pie in the sky and how do we start, you know, really. Understanding what some of the various potential projects in the area could be.
Yeah, one, one thing I would just point out, I think it's, I, I think what Alex just said about. Coming back to the town council with the data rather than making an automatic decision is a good idea because. What would be, being selected is a assemblage of project, projects. And by asking them to be ranked or assessed individually, you may not have a set. That makes as much sense or is affordable or don't compete in terms of construction. Scheduling, for example, it's a little bit more, let me make an analogy, it's like. You have applicants to the university and we go through those applications, but what we're doing is assembling a class and not just. Admitting individuals.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, that's a good point too, is that, you know, we want to kind of have a complete look at various different things and. And so, yeah, this is just kind of a initial step to continue the, the progress on this project. I know a lot of us have different things on our minds. But just to keep the ball slowly moving and then to come back with you either next month or the following month and kind of give you the results of that, this survey. So, yeah.
Thanks.
And I would just add, I just want to add, I would encourage you to. Reach out to me and Alex and Christie with questions and comments on any of the material. I think it would be great to get your responses to the survey by May first. So that we might be able to talk to you again at the May council meeting, which is like a week and a half after May first. I would. I'll acknowledge that there are a lot of constraints associated with each of these that are going to be more important to some stakeholders than others. I would encourage you to. Think about what you think as a Town of Alta council member should be our priority to pursue. We will take the results of your survey. It's a very brief survey like Alex described. Present, present those results to you and then the next step is going to involve talking to the stakeholders who are going to have some influence over whether these are feasible or not. So we'll get to, if your first reaction to one of these, one of these projects or the other is that. Altoski area or U dot or some other stakeholder with influence is going to. Not want this to happen. Disregard that for the time being, tell us what, tell us what you like and we'll go from there.
Okay. Any questions for? Chris or Alex or Christie? I'll just say to Alex and Christie, you were patient, you were here for a long time and you got to see the wheels of government. Working and grinding fine. As my, as my grandmother used to say.
Interesting discussion.
Okay, the, the next item on the agenda is Resolution. Twenty twenty R seven, amending resolution that we passed twenty twenty R four, having to do with the number of dog licenses. It just, we're not actually trying to change anything that we intended. We just didn't implement our intention as accurately as we wanted to. Jen, do you want to give an overview of what is going on, please?
I'm sure, I think you summed it up pretty well. But I guess I can add that. Just we had some incorrect math at the council meeting when we adopted this and so. The one thing that has changed in this resolution from what we previously had was the number of licenses in Class A. And so that is in this Resolution thirty-one. In Class B forty-three, in Class C eleven, in Class D ten. So it does not change the total number of dog licenses, which is ninety-five, which represents twenty-five percent of the last census population.
So. And we continue to move all of the available licenses into Class A, is that correct?
That is, yes, that's what we did.
Right, which is what we had intended to do. It's just that we didn't get the number. Precise in the, precisely accurate in the last effort.
Right, we basically double counted the two that were unfulfilled in the A when we added. The additional ones, so.
Okay, and so we need to do this today because we have a drawing coming up potentially.
Correct, and I have updated our, the Town of Alta website. It's got the drawing on it. Sent out that information to everybody that has requested it previously. I have already been receiving submissions.
Okay, and we'll hold the drawing in this kind of format, not in person.
Correct, that is.
Assuming that. Covid nineteen is not defeated by early May.
I would six, I would expect at noon on May first that we're still going to be in this situation and this will be how I will administer it.
Yeah, that's what I would figure too. Okay, is, sorry, I should have asked for a motion before all of that conversation. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty R seven? Authorizing the maximum number of Alta dog licenses to be assigned, setting license fees and authorizing a drawing for the new and forfeited town of Alta. Class A, B, or C dog licenses to be conducted if necessary.
So moved. Second.
I don't know who, who, was that Sheridan who made the motion?
I think so.
And then seconded by Elise. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, that was unanimous, so they're none opposed. Okay, very good. New business. I actually had something on my mind, but now I don't recall what it is, but. Does anybody else? does anybody else? Um, one thing I will uh, uh, I'll just reiterate my thanks to the staff for the really hard work that they're doing. I um, I, I can tell you that we, I know how hard they're working because I see it and I really appreciate it. Just want to say that again. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
Okay, all right, all those in favor, please say aye. Okay, um, good, we are adjourned. Thank you very much for putting up with the format. I think this actually went pretty well. Um, no Zoom bombers and uh, thank you for that, Jen.
Yes, thank you very much.
And I will, I will work on having the meeting in its entirety um, posted for anybody that wants a recap.
Okay, good. And it has been recorded and it has been streamed on uh, YouTube, so I think we're we were successful, so.
I'm going to watch it again right now.
I'm sure.
Until tomorrow, John.
I'm sure Alex and Christie, Christie can't wait for the uh, next installment of our show. Okay, good, good night, everybody.
Thank you very much. Good night.